Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande study session. It is Monday, May 20th, 6:30. We'll call the meeting to order, and we have tonight a presentation and discussion relating to short-term rentals. So, Mr. Rains?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to make the presentation and have discussion on short-term rentals. And I know the mayor and council is very familiar with short-term rentals as a definition, companies like Airbnb, VRBO, and the like. Couple of years back, the state legislature elected to establish statutes giving cities the opportunity to build some consistency in various ordinances and the like governing short-term rentals. And so, I know the mayor and council had indicated prior, I know many of you have received some of the same emails that staff has received related to creating a short-term rental ordinance and the process that goes with that. Tonight, we are, I've got Mr. Rob Aldis will be making a presentation providing a bit of a background and some of the options that are allowable by state statute. Our hopes are that we ultimately will get some direction from the mayor and council on whether you would want us to continue to pursue an ordinance in an effort to have a process for registering these short-term rentals and the like. And Rob has done a fair amount of research. He's evaluated the ordinances that have been passed by some of our neighboring communities, and we'll go over that information this evening. And so, with that, he will go through his presentation, and we'll entertain any questions and directions at the end of the council meeting, at the end of the study session. So, Rob?
Thanks, Larry. Today, for this presentation, we'll be going over the background to short-term rentals, a little bit more detail. Talk about the regulations and more specifics, like Larry talked about what's allowed in state statute. And talk about some options for the mayor and council to consider and give some feedback on, as well as the management process and the associated costs that staff have identified for a process to follow here in the city should we continue with an ordinance. And then offer a recommendation, and then have some time for questions at the end as well. So, by way of background, there are approximately estimated 110 short-term rentals in the city. Now, it's a hard number to nail down because we haven't done the work to actually identify it, but that's what a couple short-term rental software companies have given as a ballpark of what we might be looking at right now as a city. And this creates two different opportunities for the city at this time, to establish an ordinance with the ideal outcomes being, one, some increased additional tax revenue, because right now at this time, it's unknown if all the short-term rentals are paying the taxes that they should by law, either because, one, they might be trying to avoid it, or two, they might just simply not know and be aware of what's required. And then, second, the other opportunity be to regulate any problem properties that there might be. You all hear horror stories of other cities where there's been some short-term rental that's caused some chaos. To be intended to get ahead of that. And this, the goal of this is not to create more regulation or to impose more upon the citizens. It'd be more instead, create a good community, make sure the revenues that should be received are being received, then be able to give back to the residents. So, that would be the goal with all of it. Now, state statute's pretty specific as far as what is allowed, where it's framed in more terms of the city cannot regulate short-term rentals except within this box that it then outlines. And some of those items are some prohibitions that cities can put on short-term rentals, such as making sure that all existing ordinances are being met with, and that there are no non-residential uses, as you can see outlined in these bullet points. Some other regulations that are allowed by statute are to demand the contact information of the property owner, and also the emergency contact for the property. And the emergency contact can be the property owner as well, or it could be someone else who's local that can respond if there is some kind of event. So, then that way, people can contact someone for the state of the property. There can also be compliance with tax laws that needs to be proven by property owners, as well as neighborhood notification. What that means is the properties immediately surrounding the short-term rental will be notified that it is a short-term rental. So, that way, if something happens, they know the process that they can follow. They can also, cities can also require that the permit numbers are posted on all websites like Airbnb or VRBO. So, then that way, it's very clear distinction about what property this is. And then, there can also be a mandate for sex offender background checks on all potential guests, and this would be done by the owner of the property. And then, lastly, there can be a requirement for $500,000 of liability insurance. So, that encapsulates the regulations that cities can impose. Now, touch on the permit briefly. This formalizes the process, you could say, much like a business license, where there are certain bits of information that can be received, such as the name and contact information for the property owner, and also for the emergency contact, the address of the property, proof of compliance with tax laws, such as a TPT number. So, that way, it can be audited later to make sure that the taxes that should be paid are being paid, as well as an acknowledgement to comply with all the different laws and regulations relating to short-term rentals. And then, a permit fee, which can be either $250 or the cost of issuing the permit, whichever is less. We'll touch on the costs here in a little bit. But as far as permits go, the only grounds to deny a permit are set in statute, and they are if there's an incomplete application, if there are unpaid permit fees, if, say, someone has one property that has a suspension, and then there's another property that they're trying to get a permit for, that fact that they have one suspension can be grounds to then deny the permit for the second. There's false information, or if the owner is a sex offender, or has been convicted of a serious felony in the last five years, those are all grounds to then deny a permit. Now, as far as suspensions are concerned, cities can suspend permits for up to 12 months, and there are two main categories that can cause such a suspension. First, if there are three verified violations of the ordinance. However, statute specifically calls out that they can't relate to aesthetics, or garbage disposal, or parking. It has to be something unrelated to those items. There has to be three of those, or one verified serious violation, which can consist of a felony offense committed in the vicinity of the property by the property owner, or some sort of recklessness resulting in injury or death, knowingly housing a sex offender, or allowing certain types of non-residential or illegal activity. Now, suspension must be done through an administrative process, the statute says. However, the statute doesn't specify what that process would have to be, and so that can give the city some leeway as far as what that process might look like. And if there are violations, there are fines that are allowed in statute, and the first violation you can see is up to $500 or the amount equal to one night's stay, and it's the greater of the two is the cap. So, say if there's a property that charges $800 a night, then that can be the cap. Doesn't mean the city has to charge a full amount, but that's the limit. Then the second and third violations go up considerably. And then, another penalty that statute has allowed is if a property refuses to give the emergency contact information for the property. The city can fine up to $1,000 every 30 days until that information is received. And two more notes I want to make on the statute for short-term rentals. First is that municipalities have seven business days after receiving a permit in order to be able to either issue or deny a permit. Puts a little bit of a shot clock on there, so to speak, as well as if there is some kind of a citation or violation at a property, then the city has seven business days to notify the property owner as well. So, then to take a look at some management practices that other cities, or the things that other cities have included in their short-term rental ordinance, you see here a list of cities that all have a short-term rental ordinance, and all have some sort of a similarity to Casa Grande, and this is the group that we've used to analyze what they might be doing. And you can see that there are some different approaches taken. Cities like Morana or Oro Valley have essentially every regulation allowed in statute all included in their ordinance, kind of the maximum regulation, you could say. Whereas, Prescott Valley, on the other hand, only requires an emergency contact and a statement saying that all regulations will be met, and there won't be any illegal activity. So, kind of a wide spectrum, but you can see the numbers along the bottom show the frequency with which different provisions you could say are being used, with the permit required, emergency contact required, and neighborhood notification all being the most common, with things like guest background checks or liability insurance being less common, for example. Now, by way of a process to regulate, there were four cities that responded to request for more information on their process, and by and large, the vast majority managed their short-term rentals through the business licensing arm of the city, kind of in tandem, side-by-side, because there are a lot of similarities. And the primary department enforcing was the code enforcement division for each of these cities. Each of these cities use short-term rental software, which we'll touch on here in a minute, and each of them charged a permit fee ranging from $60 to $250. Now, for short-term rental management software, there are companies that have developed software for this very purpose, to help cities and towns regulate short-term rentals. And there are three main purposes the software can aid cities with. First is to identify and track short-term rentals within the city, where it's often difficult to identify, because what might be on a listing today might not be on a listing tomorrow, or it fluxes and changes constantly. Where a lot of these softwares use data mining techniques or web scraping to identify any short-term rental that has ever existed. So, for instance, say there's a short-term rental that only is operational one month of the year. It'll identify that it comes up every year and be able to mark that on the map as a short-term rental. The next thing that happens, that can happen with the property software, is to send automated messages to the property owners. So, in that way, it's not something where staff have to send emails and to follow up. It can be done through an automated process, essentially saying details about the ordinance, about what needs to be followed on the part of the property owner. And then, the third aspect to short-term rental software is it can provide an online platform. So, then that way, the property owners can just click a link and go right to the platform, be able to enter everything in, rather than having to send, say, a PDF form, have it be hand-entered later. It can just simplify the process. Now, many of these short-term rental software companies can have it more customized, where it doesn't have to be all three of these. It could be part or some. And so, that would be something that we could take a look at going forward. Now, for options for mayor and council to consider, there are three main approaches that staff have identified, the first being the balanced regulation approach. And this is where, kind of follows the middle-of-the-road perspective compared to the other cities, kind of takes the average of all of them, specifically requiring a permit number, a TPT number, a designated emergency contact, requiring that all neighbors are notified, does not require a permit posted on all advertisements, doesn't require liability insurance or a guest background check, does require meeting the STR regulations and ordinances, and also prohibiting any residential or non-residential or illegal activity. Includes in the ordinance fines and the potential for suspensions to give it a little bit of teeth, and then would use STR software as well, STR being for short-term rental, of course. The maximum regulation approach follows that of Morana or Oro Valley, and takes everything that's allowed in statute, and puts it in the ordinance to give the maximum ability to regulate, with the minimum regulation approach being a more simplified approach, where it's just the permit being required, a TPT number as well, and designated emergency contact, without any of the other requirements. Now, for some pros and cons for each of these options, the balanced regulation approach is beneficial because it allows the city to regulate short-term rentals, but also is intended to not create an undue burden on residents, to also try to strike a balance between where the best return on investment is for different requirements. The downside being that it isn't the maximum regulation approach. The pro of the maximum regulation approach is that it does provide every single allowable regulation in statute, but the downside being that it could potentially overburden residents with requirements that might not be absolutely necessary for the community. And then, the third, the minimum regulation approach, the benefit is that it provides a lot of flexibility and less demand on residents, but then the downside being that it doesn't have teeth, you could say, to actually enforce the regulations in the same way. As far as a management process that staff have identified that would be used, this process will be managed alongside business licenses as well. It makes the most sense to have it in that location, with code enforcement being the division that would enforce the ordinance here as well. The intent would be to use software, just because it creates a lot of efficiencies and effectiveness, that then would be less time taken by city staff that could then be spent elsewhere. A permit fee would be imposed, which we can touch on in a moment, and I mentioned that. So, as far as a process, the first step would be to identify short-term rentals, say through the software, contact the property owners. Applications will then be submitted, and finance would review and then approve these applications. Our public safety departments have requested that dispatch be notified as well of short-term rentals. So, then that way, say an officer's responding to a property, then the officer can be notified by dispatch that it's a short-term rental, so they can have that awareness going in. And then, this process would also require that each permit be renewed annually, since it would be in need of annual renewal, and it would just continue on in perpetuity throughout the life of the short-term rental. Now, relating to costs, options one and two are anticipated to cost the same, very minimal staff time, with the lion's share of the cost being the short-term rental software. I will note with the 17,750 figure that you see for the short-term rental costs, that is an average between two different preliminary quotes that we received from two short-term rental companies, one being about $12,000, the other being closer to $24,000. And so, that number could vary considerably, depending on the software platform that the city would go with. And option three would not have that cost, but would have a lot more staff time involved, would be a lot more burdensome on staff by way of hours and also personnel costs. And just a reminder that these costs can be passed on to the permit owners, to the property owners, but it does not mean that the full cost would have to. The city could elect to, say, set a flat fee of $125 or something like that to recoup some of the costs, but then eat the rest of it as part of the process. So, the recommendation that the staff have for the council is to adopt the balanced regulation approach if an ordinance is to be pursued, with the three main goals of providing a means to regulate, with also not creating an overburdening impact on residents that are trying to make some side income with maybe a spare room or casita that they might have, while also being able to make sure that action that needs to be taken can be taken through the ordinance, and also that all applicable taxes will be collected to be able to then be used to benefit the community as a whole. And that marks the end of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well done, Rob. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Well done. And thank you for, Larry, thank you to staff, and I know Rob's worked hard on this. So, this looks very good. Anybody have any questions for Rob?
Yes.
A quick comment. I kind of look at this as a business license, because they're running a business. So, that's an easy way. And then, I like the approach that he took, because I did not agree with the insurance requirement, because we don't require other businesses to have insurance, you know, it'd be required through their own standards.
Yeah, through their homeowners or whatever.
And then, you answered the other question. And then, the neighbor notification is one thing, like, it's just a notification, right? It's not like a hearing or anything.
No.
Is that?
Correct.
Just so people are aware, right?
Yeah, just the adjoining properties.
And what is it, just the immediate?
I think what the, it allows us to require the short-term rental person to give their contact information to their neighbors.
Is it just like immediate, not like a zoning case?
Correct.
The statute actually requires essentially, neighbors are usually adjacent as well as the outdoor across the street.
Be notified.
And behind. And behind too?
It did not specifically, unless Brett. Okay.
Yeah, the other thing too, let's say there's a fire. Well, if there is a fire, then we know who to notify, right? You know who to get a hold of. And I think that that's, that is probably, fire and/or disturbance are the two biggest things. And I think covering our costs, we're not in this to make money. So, I mean, yes, a side benefit is that maybe they'll pay for some rental tax, which would be nice. And, but, I don't think the permitting fee should be a moneymaker. So, if our cost is 181 and charge 185, I don't know, you know, something like that. But I'll kind of leave that up to staff, what you guys recommend. I don't know that we're here to just make that decision. Or maybe we will at some point in time.
Discussion.
But yeah, for discussion. Lisa?
And yeah, your point on, you know, I mean, the cost, the software cost of 17,000. I mean, in the end, if we don't do it, and if the staff time is way more than that, I think that investment is going to be good, especially as short-term rentals continue to grow, it seems like. And so, I'm glad we're on top of it. I didn't, I had no idea there was 110 in the city limits, which kind of surprises me. But as we get bigger and bigger, it's going to be a more appealing place for people to stay. So, but no, great. I'm glad we're on top of it and having this discussion tonight.
Bob?
Yeah, I don't know if I misunderstood, but is the requirement for identifying sex offenders, is that on the guests as well?
So, that would be on the property owner. They would need to perform their own, with the side, on the side being if the, say, the VRBO or Airbnb website were to perform one of those, then that would meet that requirement.
I think the balanced approach that you had identified doesn't require that, though.
Right.
Balance.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Because that seems a bit of a burden.
Yeah, that'd be tough.
Have, run every customer that you have through.
Your guests, dude.
You don't give all the guest names, do you, on most of those?
No.
No.
No, you don't give the initial person, I believe.
Yeah, just the initials.
Just the person renting it. Yeah, so you don't know the other three or four that might be in there, so.
That'd be hard to make.
Mayor, and I agree, Bob, when you brought that up, because it sounds like a really good idea for the sex offenders, but the reality is, how can we really do that? And four out of the 10, you know, did not do that. The question I had, because we mentioned code enforcement, and we know it's an automated system, but is more the staff would be administrative type things that deal with the software? I mean, I know that we have a lot of people that feel like we always need more code enforcement for other things. So, you know, I wouldn't want this to take away, even though it's an automated system. So, is it more of an administrative position, whoever would be covering that, like administrative assistant, or would it be one of our code enforcement officers?
Are you referring to the management of the short-term rental software? That would be done through the business license administrator in the finance department.
And that's when it can fluctuate. We're not sure exactly that number.
Correct.
Right.
Seventeen, but it could be higher.
And that probably somebody in financing, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
From an administrative standpoint. Bob?
Could you kind of walk us through, say, we have a group of residents, three or four or whatever, that complain about a particular short-term rental. Say, there's too many people there, large groups that are loud, too many cars parking, and they want to get rid of it, they want to control it. What is that process that they would go through to make that happen?
I'll give an initial thought, then I'll turn it to Brett if he has any additional perspectives. But unless, based on how the statute's written, from my interpretation, unless they are directly violating the statute or the ordinance, and it's a violation, then there's nothing that can be done, because it's a lawful allowable use.
It's private property.
See if Brett has anything else.
No, I, thank you, Rob. I think that's correct. The way the statute is written is not a neighbor-driven process. The notification is really just to make sure that the neighbors know what's going on, and have the contact information in case something is going on, so that they can try to address it. If there are verified violations, which requires an adjudication of guilt in order to be a verified violation, if you have three, as Rob said, within a year, then the license could be suspended, and they wouldn't be able to do anymore. So, those ones that you do have problems with, that you can confirm and, you know, convict, you would be able to suspend. But otherwise, it's not a neighbor-driven process where enough neighbors object, we have to, we can't just remove the license for that, or turn the license down for that.
Okay. But the current residents, the direction we would give them is if and when you have a crime, disorderly conduct, or whatever it is, call law enforcement, and they will, or they may, take enforcement action. And if that happens, that's one violation.
Right. If they're convicted of that.
Yes.
It is one violation. But anytime that there's a criminal one, obviously, you know, we recommend that you call the police, non-emergency line if it's not an emergency, but otherwise, you know, make sure if it is an emergency, you call 911. And any violations that are health and safety-related, if there's a traffic violation where somebody parked too far over on the curb, the statute actually exempts those out. Instead, we're not here just trying to paper you to death. They're health and safety violations, but noise originations, disorderly conduct, those will count.
Yeah, this is, this ordinance, or whatever, this process we're going to try and put in place is not to take away the property rights, right? I mean, it is not about us trying to take their property rights away. If you own a piece of property, you have the right to do with it what you will. And so, it's meant to more have a process in place that allows us to keep track, so that if there is an emergency, there is a situation that we know who to contact, and we know how to handle it.
Okay.
And that's really, it's really for that main purpose.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can just add on to that, just for the benefit of the mayor and council and the community, I will tell you that when we met with our public safety professionals and had the dialogue, there's nothing that's driving this to the forefront. Now, obviously, we are like, if we respond to a call today, we may be uncertain that it's a short-term rental.
Right.
But ultimately, there has not been any issues that we have identified as a result of somebody owning a short-term rental. To your point, this is To your point, this is, in essence, we have 110 today that's being estimated. We've heard numbers somewhere between 100 and 150 by various vendors along the way. This gives us an opportunity to be ahead of any type of growth in that particular industry, and ultimately, giving us the information that we need to have, number one, a better point of contact from the city's perspective, and number two, for the residents that live around some of these properties to understand what is transpiring in the specific, in a specific location.
Great. Anybody else have any other questions for Rob or Larry? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just, I know that Rob provided a recommendation from staff at this point that will allow us to go back and begin to craft an ordinance for council's consideration. Obviously, we'll be working on a proposed rate, which will require a process as well, a proposed fee. Is the stat, is the mayor and council's direction for us to move in the path of the recommendation?
Yes, I think so, yeah. Yes, I see all nodding heads.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll stand adjourned, I'm gonna, we'll reconvene at 7:05. Give us a couple minutes.